We're live.
Good evening and welcome to the Warren City School District Board of Education Regular Meeting. Today is Tuesday, May the 4th, 2021, and the time is 6:01 PM. We are located at Warren G. Harding High School in the Cafeteria and we are live streaming via WSCN and it is available at warrencityschools.org. This meeting is a meeting of the Warren City Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for public participating via email during the meeting as indicated in Agenda Item Number 11. And at this time, I'll call the meeting to order and if everyone would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Could you please call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Faly?
Here.
Mrs. Patterson?
Here.
Mrs. Shannon?
Here.
Mr. Walker?
Here.
Mrs. Lamparos?
Here. Everyone is present and accounted for. We have no need for Agenda Item Number 3 at this time, so we'll move to Agenda Item Number 4, which is Communications. Mr. Shiro.
Thank you. I have no communications this evening.
Thank you. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. So move.
Second.
Thank you. Call the roll.
Mrs. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Faly?
Yes.
Mrs. Shannon?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Lamparos?
Yes. The motion carries. The agenda is adopted. Agenda Item Number 6, Treasurer's Report. Mrs. Squirtino?
Um, yes. I'm happy to report tonight that we have submitted our Round 2 ESER dollars into the Ohio Department of Education's grant application. So we took a lot, a bit of effort, but we were able to determine how we were going to spend all those dollars and we continuous, continuing to work as an administrative team to now budget for ESER Round 3 that has not been allocated to us, but we're, we're continuing to plan. Of that allocation, 20% of that has to be used for student learning loss, so that is our first and foremost priority. And then beyond, just continuing needs that we find that are related to the pandemic and continuing operations.
Thank you.
Those are good problems to have.
Most certainly.
And other than that, wrapping up the five-year forecast and forecasting has kind of went in line with planning the ESER dollars and how that is going to impact our forecast moving forward. So, you know, look to be getting information in your board updates within the next couple weeks before the next board meeting in May, we will, where we will approve the five-year forecast.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? No? Okay. Thank you very much. Agenda Item Number 7, the Superintendent's Report. Mr. Shiro.
Thank you, Mrs. Lamparos. At this time, I'd like to turn the floor over to John Lacy, Executive Director of Business Operations, and Megan Reed, our Director of the Trumbull County Historical Society, to discuss the possibility of donation of Warren City Schools' historical items to the society. Mr. Lacy?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
As you guys know, when I first came on board, one of my first items that we accomplished was taking the historical items of the buildings and we took them and moved them all out to the front of the, the old facade there. And we think it looks really nice. And as I went through the warehouse, we also had a lot of boxes, some, I don't know what all was in there. Things that used to hang on the stadium, films that were from all of the different old buildings. So I happened to get in touch with Megan Reed to see if they, the Trumbull County Historical Society might be interested in showing some of these items the light of day. And so I wanted to have Megan come and kind of give a little presentation about what she found and what she's hoping we will be able to do. Okay? Megan is, as I think everybody knows, the Director of the Trumbull County Historical Society. So Megan?
Hi, everyone. Can you all hear me okay?
Can you, can you hear?
Thank you so much for having me here tonight. It's a pleasure to talk with you. As John said, my name is Megan Reed. I am the Director of the Trumbull County Historical Society and we collect, preserve, and interpret the history of Warren and greater Trumbull County for current and future generations. And that comes in the form of programs, events, exhibits, and of course, preserving a collection of about 20,000, give or take, items that represent our history here. Over the last, I would say about five years, school history has been a particular point where we have strove to collect more. It's been a really high point in our collecting mission. Because the history of the schools from Harding to Reserve to the buildings that have been torn down, they were never very well documented within our collection at the Historical Society. And, and over the last five years, we now have almost a full set of yearbooks, images that date back to the 1880s. And we're trying to grow that collection as much as we can so that we can use that content in our programming. And so after meeting with John and going through the collection that Warren City Schools owns, we are very interested in accepting a collection that is about 18 boxes of material. We haven't done a full inventory, but I would guesstimate that there's probably over 2,000 items in that collection that range from photographs, like class pictures, photographs of the buildings, photographs of all the schools being demolished in between the 2008, 2010 range. And we would also be looking at yearbooks, ones that we don't have from the elementary and junior schools as well. In addition to that, as John mentioned, there is an amazing collection of about 50 to 60 reels of film that are all on nitrate and currently not usable. We're already looking into grant opportunities to preserve that film and then digitize it and get it accessible to the public. But the biggest reason, the biggest sort of plus, what we would want to do with the collection right away is getting a full inventory done and then adding it to our collections management software, which is publicly searchable. So anybody on the internet could go on and search this collection and pull up all of the photos and the images so that it's more usable, not just for public consumption, but also for use within our programs as well. We would actually be able to use that material and have intellectual control over the content. So I think that's the basics. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Thank you.
I mean, I'm, I'm happy that, you know, those items will see the light of day. I'd rather have them available to the public than just kind of sitting in a closet somewhere. So, I mean, is everyone in agreement?
Definitely.
And, and I think just for legal purposes, I think we should definitely do a resolution, perhaps on the next, at the next board meeting?
We actually have a resolution that we had prepared for tonight's board meeting, but I asked to move it to the next board meeting. So that we can have public discussion on this decision so that, we figure this stuff has been sitting for
Oh, it's, yeah.
Tens of dozens of years.
Right, right.
Three weeks wasn't going to hurt anything. So I just wanted to, I prepare you as I do have that ready, if you would like to vote on that on the 25th.
Yeah.
If I may add too, I'm a huge proponent of like items in places where they will be like best accessed and seen. And if there's any future opportunities to use some of those items or if Warren City Schools would want those items on display in the schools in some fashion, like we're completely open to that option.
Okay.
And doing those that way as well.
Very good. Yeah, that's, that's fine. I think it's great.
Yeah, we're really excited.
Thank you. Yeah, no, thank you. Thank you for wanting them.
No, that's, that's our job.
Literally.
So if I can add one, one comment to it, one of the greatest gems, history-wise or year-wise maybe in our office, and I'd love for you to come over one day so I could show you. A few years ago, when we were setting up for Warren's Homecoming Weekend, we found books that were the original graduation rosters and I believe it was, they were 100 or more years old. I would even
Yes.
venture to say older than that. And it was all handwritten and it's beautiful. So I preserved those in a safe place. So safe, I can't tell you exactly where they are right now, but just like in hell, right?
I remember seeing it.
It's so safe.
It's amazing.
But these items, we put them away in our vault to make sure that, you know, they were there. I don't know if that's something we could donate or if we have to keep because of their, of the record value.
Right, is it a record?
Yeah, because it's an educational record. So we'll have to see, but it's, I have some great stuff too that I'd just love to show you if you're around.
That's very cool.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Megan.
Thank you.
Thank you all. And if anybody has any questions, please feel free to contact me. I'm always available.
Okay. Thanks, Megan.
Thanks, Megan.
Thank you, Megan. Next up for the Superintendent's Report, Warren G. Harding High School Principal Dante Capers is going to give us an update, which we do annually in April or May regarding end of year activities and what is going on here up at Harding. So Mr. Capers?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Shiro. To the board, tomorrow we will, in partnership with the Mercy Health Physicians, hold a COVID Vaccination Clinic. This will be our, our second clinic, which is a follow-up to our mid-April clinic and will provide students with an opportunity to get their second dose of the Pfizer vaccine. I would like to thank Food Service, Maintenance, also the Office of the Superintendent for their support in making this opportunity available to our students. Proud that Warren City Schools followed through on the commitment to make this available to our families and it was really greatly appreciated by those who partook in the first round. So again, looking forward to that tomorrow. Also, this year's prom will take place right here in this room Saturday evening on May the 8th. Again, we're appreciative of the support from throughout the district and it's really positioned us to deliver an event that is in line with the Ohio Department of Health recommendations and even more importantly, an event that's really poised to provide a memorable and fun experience for our seniors. So we're really looking forward to that. Going to have a catered dinner. The school's favorite DJ will be here once again to, to make things exciting for the kids. They really get excited over a DJ Brandon there. Even the, the support of the Warren Education Association, they secured a photo booth and also some swag items for the students that they donated this year.
Wonderful.
You know, recognizing that some of the revenues has decreased without having the traditional walk-through as we typically do. So we're looking forward to that also. Our walkthrough event will be modified, but it will be livestreamed because we know that our students love to share their fashion with the community. So again, thank you to WSCN for providing, making those resources available so that we can have that to show to the community live and also that it can be recorded to be enjoyed into the future. Also, thanks for the Treasurer for her support with this as well. Also, our band concert will be coming up as well in a couple of weeks. So over at Out, it's going to be outdoors this year at Molokov Stadium. That's going to take place on Tuesday, May the 25th. Band Directors Reed Young and Heather Sierney, they've done an excellent job of planning a really safe socially-distanced event for the spring and not just this spring, but all year long. They really kind of stepped up to the challenge and got creative with ensuring that we were able to deliver instrumental music instruction here at the high school. So we certainly appreciate them for their commitment with that. Creative scheduling, smaller groups utilizing more, more spaces and they really kind of did their part to ensure that that happened. We will have a limited crowd, which will follow the same protocols that we, that we have success with during our athletic events. Each student will be able to request up to four tickets to share with family members to come and to, to enjoy the concert. Again, it will take place in a very safe and responsible method at Molokov Stadium on Tuesday, the 25th. A couple of days after that, on Thursday, the 22nd, we'll be back at Molokov Stadium with our commencement, the commencement of the Warren G. Harding Class of 2021. We are certainly looking forward to that. We will be, for commencement, we'll be utilizing the west or the home stands for our spectator seating and our graduates will be situated on the field seated there and able to enjoy the ceremony. And we really felt like that would give everyone the best experience from the crowd to the students to really be able to enjoy the ceremony with a very good, very good perspective there with that. We've been working hard, John Lacy through the business office, again, Mr. Shiro, to ensure that the facility is set up for the event. Each student will receive four tickets is what we're looking at for that and that will be able to accommodate the, the crowd on the home stands. In a typical year, we would start students off with five tickets, so I'm really glad that our stadium is able to, to still accommodate a healthy crowd. We're able to distribute plenty of tickets and again, it's only one-off from what we would typically distribute with that as well. That event will be livestreamed on WSCN to help those who are not able to attend or who are not comfortable with attending, they will still be able to participate, partake in the event. And again, that's in line with the Ohio Department of Health Regulations, the 30% seating maximum capacity at, at outdoor venues and we're certainly looking forward to that. Cats and gowns, they're prepared, they'll be distributed to our students on the 24th. Again, with commencement rehearsal taking place tomorrow, get it 27th. And, and knock on wood, once I'm looking forward to some exceptional weather on the evening of May 27th. So we have, thank you.
Is there any questions for Mr. Capers or for me?
Is there board participation going to be at the commencement this year?
Yeah. What's your, what is your plan for board participation? I know we're not going to be handing out diplomas, but.
What, the board participation, what we're anticipating is the students will be on the field. We have a stage that we have rented for the evening and students will cross the stage. Board participation, the board president, you know, to accept the class, just as usual. And I'm anticipating the board, myself, Karen, Executive Directors of the District, will be off to the side as students graduate and cross the stage, doing a socially distance.
Okay, yeah.
Hey, congratulations, good luck. You know, I, I really don't anticipate, you know, getting into a lot of the conversations of handshakes are still out, you know? I mean, we have handshakes and hugs for our graduation ceremonies. That's just going to have to be something that I'm just not comfortable with at this time. I mean, even with, you know, family members. So again,
We agree. I think we all agree.
I think the best place is after the students walk the stage, that we're there to give them a positive as they head back out. So we'll have to figure the flow of students coming through, but I believe there will be a place for us to be out there between the track, the field area.
Okay. Okay. All right. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Capers.
Thank you. And our third Superintendent's Report this evening is going to be talking about summer extended learning opportunities between myself and Regina Toich, Executive Director of Curriculum Instruction. Regina, if you could take the podium, I will get started on my take of it and just giving the board the opportunity to have any questions. This is a continuation of our conversation from our last Board of Education meeting. Again, we have a very tight schedule of how we've been planning out our communications with staff, with families, and getting our, everything secured. So far, our K through 8 program is out there. We extended the opportunity for parents to apply for the program. That window closed this Monday at 8:00 AM. Principals are working and organizing the Excel spreadsheets by teacher, by class. If a teacher is working that program or if a teacher is not working that program, we're trying to keep kids and the continuity in place. Principals are working through that. The next step is going to be for principals to contact families that did not apply and then they could, if they're interested, the lead secretary could enter them in to the system on behalf of the family. Again, we're not going to open the link up, but we could register them if the family commits. Once those names are in place, we can begin bus routing. We can ensure that everything goes smoothly. We'll finalize our staffing at that point. Again, we have approximately 120 teachers that have offered to participate in this program in the elementaries and so we are continuing that process. And then we're going to work on the fine-tuned scheduling also simultaneously. So again, we secured the staff, we're identifying the students. Once we finalize the students, fine-tune the listing, get the system in place, and keep moving through it. Regina, if anything you'd like to add as far as what we're doing on this end?
So we are also finalizing the curriculum for K to 8. The CNI team has been working very diligently with coaches and coordinators and other certified staff to get that done. Now our focus is starting to shift over to the high school because that now becomes the next group that we need to work with and what that's going to look like. Obviously, it will look different at a high school level than it does at K-8. So, you know, we're, we're really excited. We've said this needs to look different. This is summer school, not because you have to be here, but because we want you to be here and we want kids to engage in learning and hopefully make up, get a chance to learn some of those skills that they didn't have time to cultivate during the school year. So.
And credit remediation is a part of both programs. If we have middle school or high school students that need to move their grade up, that's an opportunity. Their active participation and engagement will be considered for grade replacement at those grade levels. So far, we have over 800 students that have been applied into this program in the K through 8s as of last Friday. Again, the list is fluid with other families, you know, coming in, you know, by their principals reaching out. One of the things our families, you know, we, we put our communication out, Inspiring Minds waited till after our communication went out to announce theirs. A lot of families, when principals were reaching out, said, well, my child's going to go to Inspiring Minds. And we had to explain, well, Inspiring Minds is going to start on July 6th. We're going to run the month of June. IM is going to back up. This is the perfect marriage that you're going to have, you know, activities in education, academic and enrichment and otherwise with us. Take about a week off over the 4th of July, come back to IM for approximately, I think, five weeks and wrap that up. So our students, our children in the city of Warren have the opportunity to be meaningfully engaged
Yeah.
for the vast majority of days in the summer. So we talk about, you know, what are we doing with learning loss? You know, we are going to use the ESER funds, you know, as ESER 3 requires 20% to be held for identifying and responding to learning loss, we're starting immediately. And we're going to probably continue to some extent over time throughout the school year and we'll see what we're going to do next year. We don't know what, we don't know what August is going to bring, let alone next summer. So we'll see. We're planning, we're planning for the best and having all of our contingencies along the way. Again, the high school's about two weeks behind us because we've recognized we can't get everything done all at once. And so we're finalizing with Mr. Capers the process to high school. We had good teacher support as far as participating in core content areas. Mr. Capers presented a great plan to us about two weeks ago on what that could look like and students that wish to have this opportunity should have it available to them. But again, it'll be on a first-come, first-served basis where there are pockets that there may not be as many staff available. Is there any questions?
Does anyone have any questions?
I, did you say that this program will begin in June and then IM in July?
That's correct. Our program will run at the high school and in the elementaries the week of the 7th, the 14th, and the 21st, Monday through Thursday, for approximately a seven-hour day. So it'll be equivalent to a school day. Again, students having lunch, breakfast, et cetera, somewhere in that ballpark of time. Fridays will be off. Then the high school will be done on the 24th. The elementary students will come back the 28th and 29th and have an assessment piece as well as some outdoor activities, weather permitting, and, you know, some heavy recreation. And then teachers will again stay on Wednesday, absent of students, on the 30th to prepare any kind of reporting and materials to pass on to the next teacher as far as assessment.
Great. Great.
And then summer school at Harding is starting, our traditional summer school at Harding is starting July 1st. It's going to run July 1st through July 30th, with the exception of we will have no classes the Monday of 4th of July, I believe that's the 5th, and Friday, the 16th will be the day off in between the first 10-day session. We'll give a three-day weekend for students and faculty that teach that opportunity.
I do have one, another question. So will we prepare for a, I'll just call it, a, 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 August graduation or?
At this point, if we have students that are able to achieve a diploma, that were not able to achieve a diploma, we will do a, a form of a graduation.
Okay.
A commencement like we do in summer. It'll either be here or it could be through a board meeting, depending on
Okay.
the number of students that would participate. It really may not be necessary, depending on how many students are that close to graduation and completion. Mr. Capers will give me that information as it gets closer.
Okay.
See where our kids, kids end up.
A question, and this might be one more for Mr. Capers, I'm not sure. Do we have a number for our graduating class or percentage?
About 260.
Okay. So it's up from last year?
I guess.
Great.
Very good. Does anyone else have any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. We're excited for this, to start.
Yeah, that's really good news.
And that concludes the Superintendent's Report for this evening. Thank you, Regina.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on to Agenda Item Number 8, our Board of Education Committee Reports, Athletics. Mr. Nicholson.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I don't have a lot tonight, but last time I saw you was at the tennis court dedication. Thank you all for coming out, see how spectacular those were. Once again, thank you for everybody that was involved in, in that process. It was, it's really a special venue up there. Spring update, always a quick season. It's about a six-week season. Started the spring off, beautiful weather. The softball dedication was probably one of the nicest days we've had in six weeks and got off to a great start, had more games completed with softball, baseball in the first week of the season than my seven years here. As, as of late, Mother Nature hasn't been cooperating. So we, we, we still have a senior softball night to get in, which is scheduled for tomorrow. I believe Tracy sent you all that information.
She did, yeah.
If for some reason we're canceled tomorrow, it will be Friday. So Wednesday, Friday, and if it's canceled Friday, I think I'm going to scream. So I'll keep informing you guys, communicating with you when that senior night is. Hopefully, we'll get it in here soon. Tournament update, hard to believe, we're entering tournament next week. Tennis starts up at Solon. The softball team plays at Howland, the first round of sectionals. Following week, we have baseball that starts on the week of the 17th and then track will start after that. So once again, our kids are participating, playing, practicing hard, playing hard and representing. And once again, one of the things that I've gotten from, personally, from, from people that have been at our venues, I've had other teams, coaches approach me prior to the start of the games this year, they are so impressed with our campus. They, they, they're in love with our campus and, and my biggest problem is they all want to play here. And it's like, hey, we got to have some away games once in a while. So once again, I don't know, the transformation that's gone out here in the last year, it's, it's phenomenal, folks, and we thank you for everything you've done to make that happen. Okay? Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
In regards to the Recreation and Wellness Center that, that we're talking about and the Athletic Council members have been reviewing the RFQs.
A staff like this.
Would, would, would it be beneficial, is anyone available to meet as an Athletic Council for maybe an hour at a lunch hour? I don't know if that works with work schedules or not, or even in, on an evening, but the 10th or the 11th are all possible up next week, Monday or Tuesday? Because if we could get through the RFQ process together and collaborate with that, again, Athletic Council is an open meeting as it's a subcommittee meeting of the board, if it's possible for a time. So I'm looking to the Board of Education members, if you guys have any time, then we could definitely arrange our schedules to do that. I didn't want to push towards the end of this week. It's really quick notice.
Yeah. I, I have, Monday, the 10th, I have an afternoon meeting that I have to have, to be at for work and it's probably going to take a couple hours. So I would be out for that, but May, the 11th, I'm good like for lunch and beyond. What do you look like?
We can do morning too. We can do whatever works best for your schedules. If it's best to be first on in the morning.
I have an 8 to 3 appointment on Tuesday.
On Tuesday, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I can go, we can go after 3, you know?
Yeah, so we could do a little bit later.
Yeah. Which day would you like to go?
We'll do the 11th.
Yeah, yeah, Tuesday, the 11th.
What time would you guys like to do that?
You call the time, because I'm, you know, I'm okay.
3:30. Can we do 3:30?
3:30?
Is 3:30, or you want later?
That'd be better for me because I'm going to Solon to watch the second round of the tennis tournament.
Okay, so I guess that would be a public announcement that athletic council will be meeting on Tuesday, May 11th at 3:30.
Okay.
That will be, well...
Do we want to do it again, here? I mean...
We could do it here. We can do it at the board office and in the boardroom, having six people in that room.
Okay.
Does that work?
Yeah, that's fine.
I mean, Dante, I know you've had a lot of testing. I mean, you'll see tonight, an executive session in the library. It's not like you remember it, but it's, but it's a wide-open space.
Okay.
The what? Okay, location, or you have a location here, or should we do it at the board? Do it here? Library? Okay.
Just do it at the board offices.
Let's do it at the board office. We'll either be in the tech lab downstairs. That's where we have open meetings, or we can do it in the boardroom. We have everything spread out there as well. So...
And then athletic council members bring our RFQs.
Bring your bag of stuff.
Bring the bag, okay.
And we'll, athletic council, 3:30 on the 11th.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Finance advisory. I know we talked about possibly setting up something with Zoom, but more in the summer, are you thinking, like?
I would prefer like after we close the fiscal year.
Yeah.
So, once the forecast is done, I move into year closing. So, I'm thinking July.
Okay, okay. That sounds good. And do you remember how many people we have that had committed to, community members that committed to being on that?
Quite a few. I would say there's close to 20.
Oh, okay. Very good. All right. Board policies and guidelines, anything?
Nothing.
Nothing. Okay. Legislative, I know I don't have anything, Regina?
Nothing.
No. TCTC, didn't hear from Mr. Faulkner, so I don't, there was nothing there. Anything under old business? Anything under new business? Just following the script. All right. We'll move on to agenda, the recommendations, and item one on page three. Mr. Fowley, please.
Treasurer's recommendations. It is recommended the resolution listed below regarding the April 2021 board minutes be approved as submitted. Second.
Any questions? Go ahead and call the roll.
Mr. Fowley?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Patterson?
Yes.
Mrs. Shannon?
Yes.
Mrs. Lamparos?
Yes, and the motion carries. On page four, item two, Mr. Walker, please.
Revised appropriation budgets. It is recommended, the resolution listed below, for the revised appropriation budgets, A, be approved as submitted.
Second.
Okay, any questions? Go ahead and call the roll, please.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Patterson?
Yes.
Mrs. Shannon?
Yes.
Mr. Fowley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lamparos?
Yes, and the motion carries. On page five, item one, Mrs. Patterson, please.
Superintendent's recommendations, agreements, contracts, and or leases. It is recommended the resolution listed below, entered into agreements, contracts, and or leases, A through D, be approved as submitted.
Second.
Thank you. Do you, does anyone have any questions about these? Okay, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Fowley?
Yes.
Mrs. Shannon?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Lamparos?
Yes, and the motion carries. On page seven, item two, Mrs. Shannon, please.
Authorization to purchase from school bus bids received by the Ohio School Council. It is recommended, the resolution below, to purchase school buses where bids received by the Ohio School Council be approved as submitted.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions about this?
Just great that we're continuing our process. I think we have 15 buses since we started our plan of having a system in place to purchase buses on a rotating schedule.
Yeah, that's excellent.
Excellent.
It's great.
Okay, go ahead and call the roll.
Mrs. Shannon?
Yes.
Mrs. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Fowley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lamparos?
Yes, and the motion carries. On page eight, item three, and please read it in its entirety, Mr. Fowley.
Resolution to authorize superintendent to notify the Ohio Department of Education regarding Christina Scotto-Dinusio. It is recommended the resolution listed below to authorize the superintendent to notify the Ohio Department of Education regarding Christina Scotto-Dinusio be approved as submitted. Whereas on May 26, 2020, the Board of Education for the Warren City Schools approved and issued an employment contract to Christina Scotto-Disu, teacher, for the 2020-2021 school year. And whereas on December 9, 2020, the teacher submitted written communication of her intention to resign her teaching position. And whereas the board received a letter of resignation from the employee that was not accepted or approved by the superintendent. Whereas said communications were received outside of the timeframes prescribed by law for the unilateral termination of the employment relationship. And whereas said teacher has failed to appear at her assignment with the Warren City Schools, causing hardship to the district. And now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education authorizes and directs the superintendent to notify the Ohio Department of Education's Office of Professional Conduct of the employee's unilateral termination of the employment relationship after July 10, 2020, without the consent of the Board of Education in violation of Ohio Revised Code 3319.51.
I second.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Go ahead and call the roll.
Mr. Fowley?
Yes.
Mrs. Patterson?
Yes.
Mrs. Shannon?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Lamparos?
Yes, and the motion carries. On page nine, item four, Mr. Walker, please.
Acceptance of gifts. It is recommended, the resolution listed below regarding acceptance of gifts be approved as submitted. We have Chick-fil-A who donated to the Warren G. Harding National Honor Society, and a monetary donation. Northmar Church, Pastor Paul Armitage, to Willard PK-8 School, a variety of gift cards, and Western Reserve United Methodist Church to McGuffey PK-8 School pantry items and monetary donation. Thank you so much for your kind giving.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. And again, thank you to our benefactors, always in support of the schools and our students. Go ahead and call the roll.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Shannon?
Yes.
Mrs. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Fowley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lamparos?
Yes, and the motion carries. On page 10, item five, Mrs. Patterson, please.
The tuition reimbursement. It is recommended, the resolution listed below, for tuition reimbursement be approved as submitted.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? Go ahead and call the roll.
Mrs. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Fowley?
Yes.
Mrs. Shannon?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Lamparos?
Yes, and the motion carries. On page 11, item six, Mrs. Shannon, please.
Personal recommendations. It is recommended, the resolution listed below regarding personal items A through N be approved as submitted.
And that will take you through to page 22, and we do have one retirement listed on page 12. It's Roseanne Dirol.
Dirol.
Dirol. Want to thank her for her years of service to the district.
Page 12.
I'll second.
Thank you. Give you a moment to look at that. Okay, does anyone have any other questions or comments?
Just glad to see hiring taking place so early.
I believe we have about a dozen staff members hired through board at this point, including an administrator, you know, for tonight's meeting, about a dozen teachers. There's another about half dozen, Wendy and Regina, teachers that have been just approved by me this afternoon based upon committee recommendation. So, we are definitely ahead of the game and ahead of the curve.
It's excellent.
Thank you.
I see some Harding alum, too.
Yeah.
I see some Harding alum.
Yeah, I know.
That's great.
Yeah, really nice.
What was that?
Harding alum, gosh.
Some of them, I can't believe are old enough to be writing.
I know, I know. It's hard to believe, isn't it?
More to come.
That's awesome. Okay, let's call the roll on that.
Mrs. Shannon?
Yes.
Mrs. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Fowley?
Yes.
And Mrs. Lamparos?
Yes, and the motion carries. All right, and under board recommendations, we had nothing for public participation via email. At this time, under the provisions of Ohio Revised Code 121.22, the Warren City Board of Education will recess to executive session at 6:41 p.m. to discuss, A, the evaluation of public employees, B, investigation of charges or complaints against public employees, E, preparing for conducting or reviewing negotiations with public employees, and F, matters required to be kept confidential by state or federal law.
I still move.
I second.
Thank you. And call the roll, please.
Mrs. Patterson?
Yes.
Mrs. Shannon?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Fowley?
Yes.
And Mrs. Lamparos?
Yes. We will move into executive session. We will not be returning. There will be no action taken. So, thank you very much for joining us this evening, and...